We'll go ahead and reconvene and we'll let the birthday boy Superintendent Buller lead us in the pledge. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we'll go ahead and open up E1, the public hearing regarding Proposition 30, education protection account EPA and the 2015-16 school year spending plan. Do I have anybody here that would like to comment on that? Go in once, go in twice, close. Item F, adoption approval of agenda.
If I could request that we move item K from consent to action.
K what?
K what?
K1, excuse me. Deployment report, K1-1.
Action?
Yep.
So that's going to K, can you want to put that into an action item?
Yes, so we can do it upfront or we can do as an action just when it comes up.
We'll just put it in front of L1, so put it on L, put it K1. Okay, we'll call that first on action items.
Very good.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of amending the agenda to here?
Aye.
Passes, so we're going to do that. Otherwise, adoption approval of agenda. Diversity agenda.
Yep.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, approve that. Approval of the minutes. You all had a chance to read the minutes?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and move them second. Any discussion about the minutes? Any corrections or changes? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Minutes of April 14, 2014 are approved. Now, for special recognition, reports and presentations, we're going to do Students of the Month for April 2015. And just so your parents know how it works, I will call them up, the representatives, introduce them. Students, when you come up, you then want to face the camera, so turn right towards the camera over there. Smile at the red light. And then, parents will have them sit for H1, the Students of the Month, and H2, and then we'll take a break right before public comments. So if the students want to go home, or you want to buy them dinner and treat them for being such great students, that's a great time to do that, so. You cross one name, okay. So let's start with the Kennelwood Junior High Representatives. So come on up and introduce yourself first, and then you can go ahead and introduce Students of the Month for Agenda.
Hello, my name is Sue Jenga, and today our first Student of the Month is Kylie Graham.
You don't have to get closer. Kylie, you can come over here and stand right here. It's got a telephone on it. I like that instinct.
Kylie has been chosen Students of the Month by her team of teachers because she is one of our most outstanding students and wise personalities. Kylie is a vivacious, fun-spirited presence throughout Kennelwood. Kylie comes to school every day with a smile on her face, a positive attitude, and ready to work hard. Mrs. Fay was enthusiastic in her presence with Kylie. Kylie's energy and passion for learning is contagious. She's a pure rave centrist when she enters a group. She's willing and eager to help others, especially her peers. She's also fearless. As her PD department teacher's assistant, she volunteered to lead and review one of the dances during the dancing week. She strapped on a headset and led all the classes to the dance like a pro. Not only is Kylie bright and talented student, but she's also generously volunteered her time at Kennelwood, participating in both of the Toys for Tots Drive and the Busing in Backpack program. Outside of school, Kylie has been a dedicated volleyball player since the third grade. Kylie has participated in local club volleyball programs and is looking forward to playing at Casa Grande. After high school, Kylie is planning on attending Cal Poly San Luis Obispo, where she would like to pursue a career as a kindergarten or first grade teacher. Kylie's mom Nicole added Kylie is caring, loving, hardworking, and passionate about everything she does. She strives to be a good role model. Kylie is amazing and couldn't be better. Congratulations, Kylie.
Kylie's family here?
Yes.
Would you please stand? Congratulations, students.
And our second Student of the Month is Maximilian. He will not be able to make it today.
Do you want to put him over?
Yeah. Can he come to another meeting maybe so?
I don't mind having him. Okay, let's add him so he can get his accolade properly, okay? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so now, Kennelwood Junior High School representative.
Hello, I'm Alyssa Batista. Today, our Student of the Month is Dominic Buck. He's been chosen. A bright and well-grounded student, Dominic Buck has been chosen as April Student of the Month at Kennelwood Junior High School. Maintaining close to a 4.0 grade point average in 7th and 8th grade, Dominic has been on the honor roll each semester and earned the principal's Gold and Silver Renaissance Awards. Dominic is admired by his teachers for his work ethic and helpfulness in the classroom. Teachers state that he is dependable, attentive, and hardworking. His participation in class and his sense of humor are qualities his teachers perceive and greatly appreciate in Dominic. They note that Dominic is intelligent, cooperative, and mature. Assets that will serve Dominic well in his personal and academic future endeavors. Last year, as 7th grader, Dominic earned both the Silver and Gold Renaissance Awards and membership on the PJHS honor roll for maintaining a high GPA. Dominic continues to work hard and to excel in all subject areas. He currently maintains a 4.0 GPA and enjoys participating in his algebra and French 1B classes. When Dominic is not focusing on his studies, he enjoys spending time outdoors playing lacrosse and participating in competing wrestling tournaments. Dominic takes his natural athletic abilities seriously and works hard to be the best and healthiest athlete he can be. Dominic is a role model to younger students and has assisted kindergarteners in his community, something he shared as being well-memorable and special. Dominic's future plans include going to college, continuing to play lacrosse, and studying economics. He views the technology of cell phones and computer use as taking over our human interaction. As an important issue, he and his peers face a future goal that Dominic has is to become more fluent in Spanish and to raise awareness for type 1 diabetes. His parents share, "We are so proud of Dominic and his achievements. He is such a nice boy and likes to help others." Congratulations, Dominic. Tessa Irwin has been chosen as the April Student of the Month at Kennelwood Junior High School. An exceptional student and a cheerful and genuine young lady, Tessa Irwin has been chosen as the April Student of the Month at Kennelwood Junior High School. Tessa has attended PJHS for 7th and 8th grade years and has excelled and impressed the staff in all areas. Earning a 4.0 grade point average while taking accelerated classes the past two years, Tessa has been on the honor roll each semester and earned the principal's Gold and Silver Renaissance Awards. She is again maintaining this trend this semester and continues to working very hard. Tessa continues to excel in her classes in all subject areas and enjoys participating in her leadership in academic classes. Tessa's teachers state that she is an excellent student and a pleasure to have in class. Her work ethic emanates to others and she is fantastic. She is a fantastic role model for the other students in her class. She is focused, dependable, respectful, and loves to learn. She is well-liked and is always willing to help out when needed. Teachers love having Tessa in the classes, stating she is responsible, attentive, and motivated to always do her best. Her peers look up to her and she is well-liked and respected by all. A well-rounded person, Tessa keeps herself busy outside of school as well. Tessa is a vital member of the leadership class and has shared that she has learned many skills in working with other students and making the school a better environment for everyone. When she is not focusing on her studies, Tessa enjoys participating in tap dancing, soccer, and running and hiking. This year, Tessa was also the president for her 8th grade class and participated on the PJHS track and cross-country teams. Tessa enjoys spending time with her friends and family and walking dogs in her community. Tessa's hobbies include advocating for animal rights and environmental issues, photography, and drawing. Tessa hopes to become a conservan- conservationist when she is older and views environmental issues such as deforestation- as one of the most important issues that her and her peers face today. Tessa's plans for her future include getting involved in politics, traveling, and becoming a conservationist and/or an animal rights advocate. Tessa's passionate, persistent, and hard-working attitude should take her far in all areas of her life. Her parents share, "We love Tessa's enthusiasm for life. She is a vivacious personality and positive attitude that motivates her in all that she does. She is also a very caring person who advocates for animals and environment." She has enjoyed public speaking from an early age and is always entertaining us and making us laugh. Congratulations, Tessa.
Tessa's family? Oh, okay, so Kennelwood student, did he or she?
Hello.
Yeah, you want to go ahead and take care of him?
So our second Student of the Month is Maximilian.
Now, you're not the stand-in twin brothers, are you? What you can do is turn around to the right of the camera while she speaks to you.
So Max is chosen Student of the Month by his team of teachers because he is one of Kennelwood's most honorable and hardest-working students. Max is described by his teammates as kind, curious, smart, and a genuinely nice person. Max's teacher was eager to sing and pray. According to Mr. Schmidt, Max always has a smile on his face. He's a team killer that can always be counted on, participate in discussions, and share his point of view. Mrs. Broughty added that after one semester in her digital media class, Max applied for and was chosen to be her teacher's assistant. Max has continued to develop his own digital skills and he also served as support for other students in the class, generously stepping away from his own projects to assist other students in their work. In his free time, Max enjoys reading, playing soccer, and a great game of chess. Max proudly noted that he also values helping his parents with their English language development and assisting his younger brother with his school read. After high school, Max elected to college to study psychology. Max's parents live in Joseville, have this sad. Max is very smart and he is constantly researching, questioning, drawing conclusions, writing, and reading. Max is a great big brother and we love him very much and we are very proud of him. Congratulations, Max.
And members of Max's family are here? Please stand. Okay, now we'd like to invite up our Casa Grande High School rep.
Hi. I am Navi Sadio. I am the president-elect of Casa Grande High School. So our first Student of the Month is Serena Sedan. Serena is a dedicated student and has maintained straight A's throughout her high school career. She has participated in tomorrow's leader today and is a member of the Casa Grande Oza Club. She has also been a member of the Gaucho Gazette for three years and has earned awards in national sports writing competitions. She will be attending Southern Methodist University this fall and plans on studying biology. Serena plans on attending medical school to pursue her dream of becoming a surgeon. Congratulations, Serena.
And Serena's parents are going to attend it? Now, our Kennelwood High School rep. I bet you it's Mary Thompson.
Okay, our first Student of the Month is Justin Mark. Justin is an outstanding student and has excelled in many areas. He's been able to maintain a 4.13 cumulative GPA and currently has a 4.5. He was just nominated for the Press Democrat Male Scholar Athlete and will fight back with his one next month. He's also a recipient of a PDX scholarship, which will be given to him tomorrow. He has been a three-sport athlete throughout high school and is currently swimming. He served as captain of the varsity football team and won the Jack, Bud O'Connor, and Kevin Whitney Memorial Awards. He's planning on attending Cal Poly in the fall, where he will major in business with a minor in poultry science. He's looking forward to following in the family tradition as his three brothers all attended there. Congratulations, Max.
And Justin's family?
Our next Student of the Month is Allison Scripter. Allison has been very involved over the last four years at Kennelwood High School as well as in the Kennelwood community. She's enjoyed her time here and is looking forward to taking all that she has learned and using it in her future. Allison will long be remembered for putting Kennelwood girls' sports on the map. She is a two-sport athlete who has played at the varsity level all four years in basketball and track and field. She has been a scholar athlete all four years. In basketball, she was captain of her team her junior year and has also been second team, first team, and MVP of the Sonoma County League. She also holds the second highest rebounding record of any female athlete at PHS. Her track and field career in Kennelwood has been notable. It all started out at Westside Relays in 5th grade, when she surprised everyone and threw the shot put further than most high school athletes. She broke the Westside Relays and PJHS record for shot put. She currently holds the PHS record for shot put at 39 feet 7 and 1/2 inches and discus at 141 feet 3 inches. In her junior year, she made it to the California State Track Meet and play sixth in California for throwing the discus. Last year, she was awarded Redwood Empire Athlete of the Year for track and field. She is also a three-year ASD member. She served as class treasurer her sophomore and junior year, and this year is currently serving as the Senior Communication Officer. She was also voted Most Spirited by her senior classes. Allison loves helping and serving in her community. She teaches Sunday School at her church. She has volunteered her time as an assistant basketball coach for the PJHS 8th grade girls' team for the last three years. She's been an umpire for the local softball league, a referee for NJB girls' basketball, a coach for nothing but net basketball, summer camps, and also a 6th grade camp counselor for Wilson Elementary School. In her free time, she enjoys babysitting, spending time with kids and her family, and watching Netflix. Next, Allison will be attending Utah State University on a track and field scholarship. She will be majoring in little arts and minoring in Spanish. She plans on becoming an elementary school teacher. Congratulations, Allison.
Well, great job by all you young people, and you made it worthwhile. So it's nice to, you know, for us to be able to acknowledge your accomplishments and your parents. As Troy used to point out, other board member when he was president, those are all of the community, I mean, the Students of the Month. And there's very few that are junior high school Students of the Month and senior high schools. So you, junior high school Students of the Month, now have your goal set for you. And there's one member of the board on this side of the table wearing a pink shirt who has done that. So, of course, in fairness to the other two, they didn't go there. I did, but I'm going to just say, I don't think we had that one. At least, I hope not. Anyhow, good job, students, good job, parents, and thank you all. Let's go through one more agenda item and then I'll take a brief recess. So the next item on our agenda is, I forgot what it was, would be H2, which is an active learning environment. Jane Escobedo, our Deputy Superintendent of Educational Services, is going to give us a brief presentation.
Hi, welcome. We have had a very busy day today.
Thank you for doing that now. I still see spots.
We have had a very busy day here in Kennelwood City Schools. Bring this down. I'd like to introduce Kirsten Franklin, who is a teacher on special assignment at the district in science and Common Core instruction and has been very integral in helping with the active learning environment that we're going to talk about. It looks crooked, but we'll just have to look like this. So today, we're going to talk about what is an active learning environment and what are we talking about when we talk about this? Because this is the term that we have landed on as teachers and staff in Kennelwood City Schools to describe the work that we're doing to update our classrooms to the 21st century. We're going to start by listening to some of our teachers. Here we go.
An active learning environment is a space for students to embrace challenges and be motivated to achieve. An active learning environment is also a place for risk-taking and self-expression are nurturing and encouraging as part of it.
An active learning environment is a place where engaged and dynamic learning takes place. Teachers and students share the role of educator.
Having an active learning environment encourages robust student exploration and allows the opportunities to use multiple learning modalities, collaboration, and creative expression.
An active learning environment is a place where teachers can collaborate and problem-solving. The problem-solving modalities promote student engagement and partnership in their learning. And there's a lot. Students learn to persevere and connect to the knowledge you have to experience. These active student-centered classrooms promote relevant and real-world problem-solving opportunities that will further engage students in creative and meaningful learning experiences to help prepare that classroom for success.
An active learning environment is an inclusive environment that instills a growth mindset when we believe in it. It invites diversified thinking and deeper growth discussion.
Thank you, Mrs. Broughty.
And functional, informative, and learning. New, unique to the lesson. And needed and necessary for our future students.
Active learning environments build agency, relationships, independence, engagement, critical thinking, collaboration, creativity, and a growth mindset in our students. These dynamic learning environments allow students to evolve into global citizens.
And I love the fact that we have this opportunity. I'm so excited that I can actually say what's going to happen during my career and so thank you for that.
With global ownership, we are all in this together.
So, that is the introduction from our teachers on the active learning environment. And that's the introduction to ways. Not only did you get to see what our vision and what we've talked about, what we've landed on, you didn't hear the word furniture in that, in any of those. You didn't hear the word iPad in any of those because those, the things that we're talking about, the items that you see sitting around in the boardroom tonight and the iPads that they use to actually do the movie that you just saw are tools in that active learning environment. And our outcome is what they're talking about. The engagement, the student-centeredness, and the active use of those tools in developing student understanding of the Common Core State standards. So, let's move on. How we got here? Is this true? Yes, Kirsten's.
So I don't know if Jane mentioned that that whole video was made today during K-12 curriculum.
It took us about an hour to put together.
K-12 is very engaging and exciting kind that we sent today. And it's kind of nice that we have our tosete, Ashley Williams, to come in and bring. It's almost like little mini technology workshops. So she taught them how to make those clips through quick time and then grab all those clips and put them together in an idea. So that was all done today, which is pretty cool. This is the process, and it's been a very comprehensive and, I think, a really comprehensive process, actually. And it's involved a lot of stakeholders, from teachers to students to admin to yourselves. We've done a really good job. It started in May with the passing of the bond and then establishing a relationship with the consultants from One Workplace. And from November to April, the pilot classrooms were created. And during that time, we have given surveys, Ashley Williams and I, as well as other administration have gone to the pilot classrooms to visit them, talk to the teachers about what they think with the new furniture, talk to students about that. And it's just been kind of a ping-pony back and forth between all the stakeholders to share what we see, feedback, feedback, revision, revision. And we even had some other PD. The last K-12 meetings was with Holly Clark and David Jakes, and those are both experts in the field of active learning. Recently, we've been doing furniture walkthroughs with Ray and looking at the furniture that actually has to be pulled out in order to make space for the new furniture. That's a huge process, and Ray's got that really well organized. And then today, part of what we did was the exciting work of looking at the typical packages. So the consultants from One Workplace, from all of this constant communication back and forth, back and forth, have distilled it down to the pieces that meet the functions that the teachers have been looking for and stays within the budget, all that sort of thing. So we looked at that today, and K-12 was able to give even more feedback. So by the end of the week, we should have two packages for each grade span. And even that might shift a little bit too, but we're getting there. It's getting very exciting. When those typicals packages are available, they're going to go to the sites. The sites will be talking about what packages are appropriate for them, making those decisions. Obviously, we want Penderbrough and Mary Collins to be prepared for first because they're year-round schools. And you'll be hearing about them on May 12. And then after that, on May 26, you'll find out what's happening with the rest of the sites. And then by the end of May, we should have an order in, and things will be very different if it starts next year.
It's important to understand that we are actually going to break the POs and the contract into two so that we can move forward with Mary Collins and Penderbrough in a timely manner and so that we don't hold them up to get everybody else. So you're going to get a contract and POs for Mary Collins and Penderbrough first on the 12th, and then on the 26th, you're going to see the rest of it, okay? I thought I'd just give you a quick little example of what some of these typicals look like. You can see some of the furniture sitting in the boardroom here. We've got the famed wing desks here and the ottomans. Everything on wheels, notice everything is on wheels. The front row over here is in the note chairs. And these are, those are our favorite among some of our teachers, except we don't like what they call the tablets on them. This is the first view of a kindergarten, or I'm sorry, a first to third grade classroom and what it might look like. You can see that there are larger tables. That's what the kindergarten, or sorry, first, second, and third grade teachers have wanted. You'll see that there are some stools that don't have backs on them, and those actually move. They kind of wiggle for those kids who are a little bit wiggly. Wait till you see the end of this. Those kind of yellow, they look like pats of butter or quarter cubes of butter. Those kind of yellow, they look like pats of butter, or quarter cubes of butter. Those are actually kind of vinyl cubes that the kids can use as both tables or chairs. That's one. Here's a second one. It includes a configure, like, configuration like you see here in front of you, so that you can pull those apart for individual seats, or you can put them together for group work. Those whiteboards that you see there are actually on wheels, and there'll be a couple of them in every classroom. You can use them as screens, dividers, whiteboards, all kinds of things. They're also magnetic, which our teachers love that idea. This is a four through sixth grade classroom and what it might look like. You'll notice that these tables with the orange chairs are actually like the tables in the back, back there. They're standing height tables. Lots of research around standing height and how important it is for kids to be able to stand and not, not only sit during the day, but that standing is a very, very important piece of their day. The individual desks that also go together, once again, those little stools, and then the vinyl cubes. Just another picture of that same setup, same furniture in another configuration. Some of these chairs, like the blue chair that's right here, actually have a little mechanism underneath them that they actually wiggle just a little bit also, so that for those kids that needs a movement, they can have access to that. This is a high school room, and middle school to high school. You can see the note chairs, a small group of those, standing height tables, and then the lower tables. This is the one that's gonna change a little bit because our secondary people told us today that they want more flexibility, that just the large tables, that seat four are not, it doesn't give them enough flexibility. So they're looking at, see this table that the podium is on? So we're gonna replace some of those large tables with some of the smaller ones, okay? And then finally, there's just one more view, same thing, different, just a different configuration. They will be working with us on looking at all these different configurations and looking what classrooms can look like. They'll be here in June during our staff development days to help teachers kind of envision how they might use this furniture and to create this active learning environment that our teachers have been talking about. Questions?
Question, I have one. I mean, Kylie's family is probably the most comfortable here. Should we get testimonials? They're sitting in the new furniture, looking pretty well.
Yeah. There's some, some people are sitting out on the, on the stools out here, CV stool. They're wiggling around over there.
Gina, I have a, or Phoebe has a question.
Yes.
Seriously, you might wanna mention, I think we learned when Sharon and I first looked at a model classroom, maybe elaborate a little bit on that. It's for the, for the computers and the one-on-one devices, the no skid. And that's the reason for it's bigger and it's different than the old desktops. And you might wanna explain some of those features that had to be built into this.
Sure, so when you look at like these chairs here, we actually are probably not going to do a lot of these because the surface area is small. By the time they get their iPad on there, they're not gonna have a lot of room for like a paper, a piece of pen, or paper and pencil, that kind of thing. And we want the kids to be able to have, we're not talking about, just because a kid has an iPad, they're gonna be using the iPad, you know, 24/7, 365. They might be thinking that they're going to be doing that. But we know that, as the teacher said in that movie, that it's a variety of modalities, and that kids need to have a variety of tools available to them. So our teachers actually identify that as too small. And so we're not buying those. That's why we're going, we'll have some of these chairs, but they won't have the desks on. They will move up to a table.
What we can do is auction off, what are we doing with them?
There are a couple of teachers who have already cleaned them.
Does she go to the students of the month?
Sorry, we're gonna have to fight with the teachers. Any other questions?
Oh, I have a question. Will the classrooms have a variety of furniture? You might have some tables, some desks, some stools.
That is exactly what you saw in those pictures and what we're calling the typicals. And that was something that the committee felt very strongly about, is that there was not 30 or 32 of just one thing. That in this active learning environment, in this new kind of teaching that we're, we're working towards, that there's a variety of workspaces for kids, and that they choose among those workspaces what will work best for them in the project that they're working.
I mean, do we anticipate that 10 kids are gonna race to the rolling chairs and hop backed over them?
So far, we haven't had any flights.
I think, what's wrong with assigning a seat? Is that gone?
Assigning a seat is gone.
Actually, Jane, Jane, yeah.
Kirsten?
I've actually heard a couple of teachers talking about that recently. And, you know, at first, using the term freaked out, freaked out, I couldn't make them, you know, where is I gonna send all these kids? And I, I need my seating chart. And they let go of that, and actually, it's working out just fine. Better.
So it's, it's.
It's gonna make it a lot harder to remember their names and faces, but.
A lot more name case, we're gonna be buying a lot more name case. It is a brave new day in the world of education. We've been talking a lot about it for the last couple of years. And it is coming to fruition here in Petaluma City Schools. When our students and our parents walk back into the classrooms in August, it is going to be a new environment.
What's the plan for all the old furniture?
Ray has a, where is Ray? There he is. Ray has a great plan for the old furniture. Ray, you wanna?
So why don't we announce, why don't we tell everyone who Ray is?
Ray is the, well, Director of Food Services.
Now you wanna ask what he has to do with furniture?
So, yeah, Ray's the Director of Food Services, but he's also our go-to guy on these kinds of projects. So Ray.
So we're offering the furniture after we bring it to you to surplus out to all the Alhaga School Districts, Oakland, New York, all Petaluma First, Rutter Park, Oakland, Fairfield, and surrounding areas, and they can purchase what they wanna purchase. The leftover furniture that is not purchased, we have a company in Texas that purchases the furniture that's still in good shape, and they pay us for that as well. And the furniture that's bad, I'm working with Alcola in Vallejo to have it scrapped, and then we'll get money for the scrap. So that's the process for the upgrade.
Any other questions, Mary?
Our cafeterias and the purpose rooms can also have?
No.
Active learning?
Not yet.
Active meeting.
He gets more money, pulls together, maybe. So, any, I mean, we're very excited. It's been a very active year-long process. Mike Cole started the process back in last summer, really, once the bond was passed. This is when it started to activate. And we have come to the, come to the culmination today with these typicals and getting them back to the schools. So within the next month, we will have every classroom designated what's, what it's gonna look like, what's gonna be inside of it, and then you'll be seeing the POs and the contracts, and away we go.
What about teacher desks or tables?
We are not going to be replacing teacher desks and tables at this time. Focusing on students first, so, okay?
And so like anything, any rollout, there's gonna be, there'll be glitches and changes that need to be made and challenges. But I would encourage all of you, parents and students, to feel free to weigh in because your input's important. And we'll just move this along and hope that we get the bugs worked out. And come September, everybody's watching sooner than, because we gotta do our two charters, so.
Yep, we get the two charters first. We are going to be, K-12 felt very strongly today that we need to send a letter, maybe an email letter with that video in it, embedded in it, to all parents in the school district. So we will be working on that letter, and we will be getting that out to everybody so that they have a deeper understanding of what we're doing and why this is so important to our students and to our teachers and to the future of Petaluma.
Well, thank you very much. And with that, I'll go ahead and, we'll take a brief recess so parents and students can. Okay, let's go ahead and reconvene. Oh, wait, I gotta wait, sorry. Can't do that yet, he was not here. Jump the gun. Missing one of our women.
Oh, goodness gracious. We're just. What's next on that?
It just wouldn't be terrible, Ron. Or legal. It's all right, we just called that door and waited. All right, now we can reconvene. So, any public comments today, Sue?
Nope, no parts.
Okay, no public comment, move on. Report on activities and correspondence of the school. Sharon, would you like to read that? Let us know what people have been doing. Yep, I'd love you to read it.
Let's see, we had Westside Band Festival, Grant Performing Arts Production. Our new superintendent come this summer, and I went to every single school site today for a whirlwind district tour. Workshops on Prop 39 funding and special education funding. Do you want me to, no? Community Achievement Awards, Bond Project Meeting, Valley Vista Site Visit, varsity softball and baseball games.
That's lunch at Casa Grande with principal and assistant.
Okay, there you go.
So those are some of the activities. And Phoebe and I and Steve were at the Community Achievement Awards, and very, very impressive from both our comprehensive high schools. I mean, if, if those kids are our future, we, we don't need to worry much. Although my straw poll was that most of the kids were either going to Cal Poly or UCLA, surprisingly.
UCLA was a big ticket this year.
And they must have closed down Davis because none of them are.
Last year, I was there, and Davis had a ton last year, and the year before.
But anyhow, very impressive. I mean, there was, someone was going to MIT, and someone was going to Harvard, and someone was going to Berkeley, and just some real impressive classes, some real impressive kids. And for those of you who haven't been there before, they do the junior and sophomore years as well. And those kids are well on their way as well. So congratulations to all of them. I know you were there, and Steve, and everybody who was involved, good job.
And U.S. Naval Academy.
Oh, yeah, we had somebody from the U.S. Naval Academy, which is no easy entrance. So anyhow, let's go on to our consent agenda. K. Second, okay? Anybody have discussions or concerns about consent agenda? All in favor? And that was on the understanding earlier, right, Sue, that K1 was gonna be moved to the next item, which is L on action items. So L action items, we'll start with K1. So Steve, you asked it to be moved to?
Yeah, I'd like Ron to come forward and, if you wanna make a motion.
Yeah, go ahead. Hi, for a second, I'll make a call. The video replay shows that Sharon, you got it.
That should change, Sharon. Anyhow, actually, the, the reason that we asked to move this to an action item is we have an introduction to give for this evening. Will the chair let's step forward, who's been selected as the Director of Human Resources? I think you've made a fabulous choice. I've known Linda for seven years, nine years, nine years. Worked very closely the last five years, and have been so impressed with the work that she's done, both at Casa Grande and in the district. And I know that she will be a tremendous asset to you and the district and the Human Resources Department. One of the things that she's done is, that I have been, you know, near and dear to my heart, is the evaluation process for teachers. And she's been, you know, at, and she's been in the middle of that since the get-go. So I think it's gonna be a tremendous, it's a wonderful transition, and I think things will only get better in that department. As they did at Casa Grande in the last five years, so it'll be seven years. Thank you. Thank you, Linda.
Thank you very much. And thank you to the board for selecting me. It's a wonderful opportunity. I'm thrilled to be here, and I will try to live up to all the things that you just said. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
I'm gonna kind of just hang around.
Okay, so, discussion? No, we won't discuss it. All in favor? So it's official, but you can't back out now? All right, so now, on to L point 12. Oh, I'm sorry, L point 11. Yeah, that was K1. This is Resolu, I can speak. Resolution 1415-38 of the Board of Education, the Petaluma City Elementary and Joint Union High School Districts, honoring the contributions of teachers to quality education and declaring the week of May 4th through 8, 2015, as the quote, "Week of the Teacher of Close Call." Discussion.
Yes, yes, I actually would. That's exciting. It's wonderful because Jane was just talking about, you know, we've been hearing a lot about the learning environments and the one-to-ones and iPads. And I think all, I know all of us are very aware that those tools and toys are, you know, great. They're fun, just roll around in, but they really are nothing without our teachers. Our teachers are the ones who create the environments. They develop the curriculum that will sometimes use those iPads and sometimes not. They are the ones that make all the difference for our students. The relationship between teachers and students are the heart and core of education. We appreciate that. Sometimes they don't know that we appreciate that, but we do, and I just wanna thank them, and that's some small token of our recognition of all the work that they do. So, as representatives of the high.
Well, I don't think it's lost on any of us where the Community Achievement Award kids come from. And I come from a vacuum, so our teachers are doing a great job getting ready. Comments, discussion? All in favor? So, L point 12. So this is the Declaration of Need for Fully Qualified Educators in the Petaluma City Elementary School District for 2015, 2016.
So, and if you'll notice, the next one is actually, so one of them's for the. Okay, once, well, just say, and why said, although.
You can say "did" on the next time.
Yeah. Although, we hope that we will actually be able to find teachers that we can hire to join the ranks of the fabulous teachers that we have here as fully credentialed teachers. We know in a few of our areas, as I've come to you this year, we, we struggle with some areas, and sometimes we have to hire teachers that are interns or still in a program at, in the university and work in an internship program. They're not fully authorized, and so we ask you in advance, as we're required to by law every year, to set this aside in case we do need to go beyond the ranks of the credential teacher to find interns. We have once every couple, or a couple times every five or six years provisionally. The only way this happens is if we have gone out a number of times and we're just unable to find a qualified teacher for a classroom. And so then we find, then we get an intern who's working with the university with the induction program specifically designed for interns and with their colleagues and administrators at the site to give them the support they need to make sure that our students are getting a quality education.
This looks like that special education might be.
Special education is our, it's been a huge challenge. Particularly right now, we're finding, you know, it was a great idea to take back the students, and we've got the consortium, but we are, we are attempting to hire a large number of special ed teachers currently, and, and it's, it's a challenge. And, you know, there are a couple of other areas that we, we find challenging, but hopefully, we will get out, you know, get out and find people who are great members of our Petaluma City Schools family.
Any other questions?
How does it work, Ron? If someone's been here potentially for the year or six months, and then they go back to being an intern? Or they, we've been, look at hiring them in that job?
So, they, as, as an intern, they are in a program. They're basically, they were in a credential program, and then they become an intern program. The biggest, one of the biggest problems with that is normally, they would be student teachers, so they would be. teachers, so they would be working with a master teacher on a regular basis and getting guidance from that master teacher. It is often from the schools themselves, when we can't find somebody, teachers, administrators will say, you know, we have a wonderful teacher here, you know, can we hire them as an intern? And then they get in the intern program. So the year of that intern program gets them into their credential so that they could be hired as a fully credential teacher the next year.
Call a favor? I'm not going to say ditto, are we? L.13, Declaration of Need for Fully Qualified Educators in the Petaluma Joint Union High School District for 2015, 2016.
So, process is about the second, the highest goal as an elementary school. Actually, it's probably more challenging, we have less of a needed elementary, they're usually are-
Easier to fill.
They're, they're more, you know, they're, they're more qualified, such as teachers available when we do our hiring. It's really the single subject areas that we struggle with a lot, although special ed at elementary level can be challenging.
Question? Call a favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Move on to L.2, Business Services. Purchase orders. Everybody? Probably should put in. Everybody look at it? Anybody have any questions or recues? TV, okay?
What's the emergency project? Electrical project, is it a cost of, and various electric?
That was in regards to Pem Grove Elementary, when we were taking down the old admin building, which had been used for YMCA as we reconstructed, actually, very old administrative building and modernized it years ago. We had to move the phones, alarms, and everything out of that building, and relocated.
We approved that last one.
Yeah, so you approved that last one, this, this means we have just purchased it.
Oh, actually, it's on here.
Yeah, the purchasers, on your four fares.
Yeah, we already approved that.
That's right. Any other questions or comments? Call a favor? L.22, Listed Expenditures. Would you have a chance to move that in? You got to recuse yourself first, okay? I'm good, yeah. So any questions or comments? Call a favor?
Aye.
L.23, Memorandum of Understanding Authorization Governing Us of Measure E Facility Bond Fund Between the Petaluma City Elementary School District and the Live Over Charter School.
So move.
Steve?
Yeah, we have a Prop 39 requirement to provide facilities for every 20 students, basically a classroom of 20 students of our elementary district that are attending Live Over Charter School. And so under our bond measure, which is a Prop 39 bond, we included Live Over Charter so that we would meet that future obligation. And now we've entered into an MLU indicating that by the time we go into our second sale, next sale of bonds, we will have committed the resources to their project. Again, the project continues on finding a place within Petaluma City Elementary School District that's its bond funds directly from the citizens within the elementary district to construct a facility that meets their needs.
Do you know if this is, sorry, this is the dependent, the independent charter that fairgrounds? Do you know if they've been able to look?
I'm not aware that they've currently already found a site. This gives them approximately five years to be finding a site, and again, we're only paying for a portion of the construction costs.
So they have to get the additional funding?
They will have to have a capital campaign to pay for their share of the facility.
And Steve, I think it's important to note that my understanding is that if they discontinue being a school, that the facilities revert to our district.
Correct. Yes.
So any other questions or comments? Call a favor? L.24, Expenditure Authorization Foundation 30 Education Project in Canada.
This is the Prop 30 funds, which is-
Wait, Ray, would you do me a favor, just, just so everybody knows, because we're on camera, just introduce yourself and since you're going to be talking, so everybody knows who you are.
I'm Ray Poole, the interim CEO. So Prop 30 funds is Education Protection Act, which specifically says that we fund certificated salaries and benefits with that. And basically, the LCFF funds, it's, we do the LCFF calculation and we get this pot of money, but the Education Protection Act is a part of that, so we don't get any more funds, it's just allocated to a resource.
So it's just a subset of the general pot of money that we get?
Exactly.
That cannot be used for administrative salaries?
No.
Do you have any questions or comments? Call a favor?
Aye.
So the rest of it's for discussion information, anybody, L.1 through L.22, anybody have anything they'd like to?
Did the ADA report seem like it was a little higher loss again, or is it about the same?
The charters had a small loss, and the elementary and secondaries had a small loss. Overall, I think it was a 5 ADA drop. Okay. So I was thinking it was in the 270, and then it looked like it was in the 290 range overall. Is that right? I mean, based on my second interim projections, it's only a drop of five. Okay. Five students.
What we had anticipated.
Yeah, okay.
Well, what, what, what did we anticipate?
The ADA?
Yeah, you said drop of five from what we anticipated.
Correct. Ray, over the, the projected ADAs for-
At the moment, projections? At second interim, we were projecting 7,178 ADA. And P2 actually came in, oh, just 7,147, 7,174, so just about 3 ADA drop between charters, the elementary, and the secondary district.
So very close to what we projected in January as far as our April numbers.
Any other questions or comments on the discussion items?
No.
Okay. Let's see, future business, anybody have anyone discussed, you know, about your future business?
For the next report, Jane, is there a-
We'll be talking about the iPad deployment with firm dates and all of that kind of stuff so that you can have a clear picture of that. We'll have the MOs, MOUs, I'm sorry, not MOUs, but the purchase orders for Cherry Valley and Penbury.
When is the LCAP coming?
The LCAP will be here the first, the first meeting in June.
You will have meetings of the boards for that?
No.
So, yeah, we'll have the public hearing on the first meeting of June for both LCAP and the budget with approval at the second meeting in June.
Has to be, this goes by June 30.
Okay. So we're, Sue, you're going to get us started on signing of papers, we're going to dispense with P, we don't need to go to closed session, we don't need to reconvene because we need to go in closed session, and so that leaves us with a report out on the items heard in closed session, so we had one student discipline matter, and that was case number 34. So a case has been presented to the board that the student did commit an expellable act as defined by California Education Code. Prior disciplinary actions have been attempted, were not successful, and/or due to the nature of the act present that people caused a continuing danger to the physical safety of the people and others. The recommended motion is for the board to support the site disciplines team's recommendation for expulsion in accordance to board policy and to facilitate enrollment in a county-operated school. The student's expulsion status will be in effect for the spring semester of the 2014-2015 school year and the fall semester of the 2015-2016 school years. Conditions above subject to review with evidence of positive attendance, satisfactory behavior, counseling program, community service, and appropriate academic performance. Call a favor?
Aye.
So 4-0, obviously Troy's not here. So with that, was there something else? Oh, Mary, sorry, Sue. I called her Mary. Oh, sorry. Depends if I look left or right, maybe Sue will have to marry him, sorry, Sue. So with that, there being nothing further, we'll go ahead and adjourn.